I call this meeting to order for the North Adams City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 27, 2022. This meeting is being recorded. Please take the roll. Barbo? Here. Bona?
Here.
Harpen?
Here.
Obasahan?
Here.
Olewskiewicz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Blackmer? Here. Nineties were all present. Please rise for a moment of silence for remembrance and the pledge. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The clerk is out sick, so he does not have the minutes for us, and he was on vacation last week, so we will make sure that we catch up the minutes at the next meeting. Hearing of visitors on agenda items, anyone wish to address the council on agenda items? So, I guess not, we'll move directly in. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Robert Smith. I live at 163 North Street in North Adams, not in Pittsfield, North Adams. Okay, this is a reference to short-term rentals. I'd like Council Bonner for spearheading this and bringing it to the floor. Thank you, Council Bonner. I think there should be regulations for short-term rentals for many reasons, but some of them are in paperwork tonight. It's a safety thing for people who use those units. There's a lot of things that should be regulated. For example, there should be a fire extinguisher in there, a fire alarm in there, and if it's run by gas, you need to have a carbon monoxide monitor in there as well. The whole idea is, a lot of these units we don't know about, as Mr. Bonner or Council Bonner mentioned, and so we need to find out so we can have a better idea on the safety for everybody involved with these units, whether it be residents in the city or those visiting our city. So the main idea is a good idea, we have to get this passed, we have to get the regulations out there, and so we have a better control, the city has a better control on what's really going on with these units. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Robert Cardamino on 73 Squinzy Street. I understand there's even at Moca, they have rooms for rent, and I picked this up online, and I'm wondering if this applies to Moca also. I don't know if the building inspector was over there or whoever controls looking at the rooms, but I was surprised that one of the employees of the city knows nothing about it. But I picked that up online, so it's something to look at. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, so we will now move on to council paper 11,790, an ordinance to amend Section 10 entitled Special Regulations of Chapter Z of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams by inserting a numerical order there in the following section 10.13. You all have the updated language with a letter from the planning board. I will read it. December 27, 2022, President Blackmer writing on behalf of the North Adams Planning Board. The planning board held a meeting on December 12, 2022, to discuss and vote on the short-term rental ordinances, STR, based off the joint meeting we had on November 28, 2022 with the city councilors. The planning board recommended approval of the proposed STR ordinance with any adjustments to the three questions about clarification, which have been redlined and are presented before you today. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me directly. Regards Lynette Bond, Vice Chairman, North Adams Planning Board. So, they are recommending to move forward with the ordinance. A motion? Go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to accept as amended, pass to a second reading, and published by a perlop.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Wilkinson and Councilor Olewskiewicz. And Councilor Wilkinson, since you made the motion, do you have anything to add first?
Well, obviously, the planning board met with, in a joint meeting with the councilors. They had, they're not three changes they were looking for, they just wanted three clarifications of language that was used. You have those in your packet, they are redlined. As to the change of language, there was a question about what was exceeding three bedrooms in an individual home? That was struck, not just for a dwelling unit made available for short-term rental that is the primary residence of its operator. I must admit, even the building inspector, when the planning board asked that question, said, "I'm gonna have to get back to you." Well, he did. He got together with Mike New Valley from Community Development, and they're the ones that changed the language. The second one was, it's on the second page, and we originally had said, nobody could remember why it wasn't in there, that because of the distance of the custodian, the person in charge in case of emergency, it should be somewhat local. Twenty-five mile radius was added, that would seem to be the magic number that everybody liked, we had mentioned that during the joint meeting, so that was added. And the last one isn't in your package, because after reading the language, the building inspector, Bill Moranty, and head of Community Development, Mike New Valley, thought the language was fine as it was. They think that maybe the planning board might have been confused, some terminology, but after going over it, they were happy with the way it was. Other than that, there's no changes. We have all voted on this previously at another meeting, it passed unanimously. The planning board has passed this unanimously, and now it'll come back to us for hopefully the last time.
Thank you for the work of the General Government Committee and the ad hoc committee, internally, the Administration's ad hoc committee on the work they did on this. Anyone else have anything to add to the discussion? Councilor Barbo?
I do have a question. Is it normal that this would go to the solicitor first for an opinion before we? I don't believe it's been to the solicitor. If it has, I don't recall. Do you have any response?
I can't keep track. It's been, there's been so many revisions, I'm not sure what went back, and I would have to ask help with the mayor, but we can also, okay.
I did ask that question, and one of the people that was working with the ad hoc committee was Zach Fleury, who unfortunately, I was working for taking a better job. At some point, the document was reviewed by the city solicitor, to what extent, I'm not sure, but all parties involved thought that that move wasn't necessary.
Well, I would beg to differ, and what we can do is pass it to the second reading, because we do have two weeks before we're back, and ask the Administration to get an opinion, just a final opinion from the solicitor in the meantime.
That's fine.
So I will shoot that email. Councilor Barbo?
I do have one more question. Though there's no one here from the Administration tonight, but it's great that this is gonna go through in 10 days, we're gonna be all up and ready and rolling, and we've got a new ordinance in place, but what role has the Administration prepared for in order to take this on? Do we have a registry? Do we have inspections? What date is this gonna take place for folks? So in 10 days, are our short-term rentals therefore illegal, or what kind of plan does the Administration have? I don't know what that was discussed with the General Government.
Well, I don't think it's up to the General Government, I think it's up to the Administration to do the...
That's fine. I had an answer, but that was...
Oh, go ahead. That's fine.
They're waiting to see if this passes or not first. I know that Mr. Moranty has already made plans to make sure that the yearly inspections will be done in timely fashion, he's promised that. Somewhere in the beginning, the planning board will have to come up with the verbiage, as they always do, for special permits. But once they get by the first one, the rest of them will be pretty much the same. I don't know the Administration's plans, but every time we spoke with them, they seemed confident that this would be no problem in implementing it.
Can I just, with a quick response, my concern to that is, we have multiple, I believe it's 109 short registered with the state, short-term renters, and what should they expect of when this will take effect, and how will they move forward operating their business? If we don't yet have a plan, I'm not sure how we can pass something, and we don't know what the details of that was the answers are.
Councilor Bonner?
I think during the discussion, because I know at one point I asked the building, or Mr. Moranty, a similar question of will we be ready, how will this, and I felt, I think at one point I even talked about, should it be divided into every other year, certain number of properties go on even numbers, and he seemed to assure that it wasn't going to be an issue. I have to agree with Councilor Blackmer that those are, if the Administration felt that this couldn't be done, they would be here saying, "Hold off until we're ready." That's just my feeling. I have not seen that come from the mayor, I have not seen that come from the Building Department. Clearly, this has been going on for so long that I would think they probably have been prepared, this could have happened six months ago, a year ago. But Mr. Moranty has not insinuated to us that he can't do it, you know? I felt a slower process of getting him out, but he seemed to, at our meeting here, assures that he can get them all done within a year without it affecting his staff or schedule. And again, I would think it's not, unfortunately, it is not our, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but it's not our authority to be able to dictate to them of how they're supposed to handle their job. I feel, again, if the mayor felt it couldn't go out, she would be here saying, "Hold off, we're not ready yet," and I haven't heard that. That's just where I'm going with it.
And from a technical wonky, the ordinance goes on the books, then the Administration, the enforcement takes place. Do mailings go out? It depends, and some of these are impacted by special permit, some of them are not, and it'll depend, and I think that is, again, Councilor Wilkinson and Councilor Bonner have said that it's up to the Administration. We have a book full of ordinances, some which there's planned for and things are done, and some which aren't, and I am guessing this is not a particularly busy time for use of short-term rental. It's not the summer season, ski season maybe a little bit, but that all depends on the weather, so hopefully, at this point, it is up to the Administration and the staff to implement the ordinance that we approve. Any other questions, comments? Councilor Bonner?
Yeah, I'm glad we're at this part. You know, it's something that we've been discussing for a long time. I know Councilor Shade has been hesitant in time, but she also said, "This is a beginning, and if we find there's flaws or things that aren't working right, we can amend them and make changes as needed." But I think the most important part is there, and that is that we put something in place where some kind of safety measurement is in there for some of these apartments to, or short-term housing to at least start getting some kind of inspection. So, it's a start, and, you know, we may not really see, I think at the end, especially the short-term housing owners are not gonna see a huge difference, I really don't think so. I mean, if they are, as they have come forward and said, you know, "We're doing a good job with our property, we get good ratings, dah dah dah," if they're good, short-term housing owners, then there should not be any issues, that they've done everything to make it a safe property. You know, unfortunately, it's always those one or two that slip through the cracks, and hopefully, this can stop some of that, that creates some dangerous situations, so I'm glad we're here at this point, finally.
Councilor Shade?
Yeah, I think we have something that is a starting point again, and I do believe it's gonna take us probably a full year to look at this and see how it impacts the community and see what changes we need to, we're going to need to make changes, this is not settled, this is not the end of us talking about this. Things will have to evolve, especially as the state starts passing its own laws and getting those implemented. We will have to make adjustments along the way, and we want to work with everybody to make those adjustments. But we have to start somewhere, we have to know how many units there are, and we have to keep everybody safe, and I think that this version does do that and clearly outlines that. Also, any questions that we have for the Administration or implementation? We can pass it to a second reading tonight and get answers to those before the final passage in two weeks at the next meeting. So luckily, we do have some time for those questions to get answered, and hopefully, we can come back together next time, have those answers, and then finally, make the final pass. But tonight, I think we should pass this to the second reading. I think this is not a perfect ordinance, but it's a good start to one, and we will continue to grow and develop from here. Thank you.
Do we need to make an amendment as a forward to solicitor, or is that just gonna be done?
You can amend your motion if you'd like, Council Wilkinson, just so it's formal.
I'll amend that, my motion is to amend to send to the city solicitor before our next meeting and get his thoughts, or their thoughts, excuse me. Second.
So on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilor Sapienza?
Yes, I just want to say that I want to thank the ad hoc committee and Councilor Wilkinson for coming up with a workable short-term rental ordinance. It's a good baseline, it's where we need to start, it's a good start for us, and I certainly can go along, the language is a lot easier to understand than it was when I first saw this ordinance back in June of 2021. So I want to compliment the committee and Council Wilkinson on the good work that they did, and I will fully support this ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, we've had an amendment, we've all voted in favor of the amendment. Now we have the motion, the language as amended, on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
I'm sorry.
Opposed.
You two, okay, so there's seven yays, two nays.
Do you have to mark who?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's always good to know, but we don't have to, it'll be, the next one will be a roll call, though.
All right.
Seven yays, motion carries. And if you could follow up tomorrow and send the language to Attorney Bard? Attorney Bard to make sure that he is, and say that we've asked him to look at it, and it'll be back in two weeks.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Council Paper 12,208, review and respond to open meeting law complaint from November 21, 2022, and a letter of response to the complaint. There was an open meeting complaint filed, it was reviewed by the city solicitor, who said that the council as a whole did not need to meet and respond, so Council Bonner responded. In the meantime, the AG's office, and a follow-up to that, after they received the response, informed the clerk and me that we needed to actually have a public meeting on this. So that's why this is on the agenda. I will read the complaint. Description of alleged violation, North Adams City Council Bonner sent an email to all North Adams City councilors on November 18, 2022, which constitutes a quorum of the city council, the public legislative body of the city. The email included a letter from a local commercial real estate developer and his opinion regarding the municipal tax classification shift policy. In addition, Council Bonner added a paragraph of deliberation to reinforce the developer's opinion and status in the community. A public hearing, a municipal order via the mayor to determine the tax, city tax shift was an agenda item of the North Adams City Council on November 9, 2022. Said order was referred to this finance committee with a return date to the city council of November 22. Council Bonner is a senior councilor, has served for two decades, he has chaired all committees and served as council president for two years, currently operates as the finance committee chair. As a highly seasoned public official and counselor, he knows the open meeting law and the requirement that public bodies must be, that public bodies be open. Each year, Council Bonner has verified the receipt and view of open meeting law guidelines, his experience and knowledge with open meeting law indicate his email sent to all councilors, capitalized all, which deliberated an open city council issue was an intentional violation. Please see attached agenda from November 9 and November 26, along with the email sent by Council Bonner to full city council. Councilor Bonner responded. At this point, the response of the city council would make sense, since the city council was not really part of this, to have Councilor Bonner respond to the complaint, and at that point, which he has actually already done, so we're kind of backtracking. So a motion to allow, to have Councilor Bonner respond to the open meeting law complaint, since it was actually against him as a member of this body, but against his actions, that motion would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Council Sapienza? Discussion on having Council Bonner reply to the open meeting law complaint?
He already did.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second to have Councilor Bonner apply to the open meeting law complaint. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Councilor Harpen opposed, and I didn't hear you one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain from that, because I feel my name's been included in this response, and I don't think that's appropriate, so I'm gonna abstain from the other.
Okay, and one abstention. Okay, so we have seven yays, one nay, and one abstention, the motion carries. Council Bonner, can you respond again to the, I will forward you the email from the city clerk, from the AG, if you don't already have it? Let's go back to the agenda. Open forum, anyone wish to address the council on issues of municipal significance? Mr. Cardamino, go at it.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinzy Street. National Grid was up on my property today, and they installed two telephone poles, and they installed them, and they left the old ones still there. The new poles that they put in are several feet from the other, the old poles. So I went out and I tried to talk to the fellas there, and they said that the former was not there, they just had to put the poles up, and so I came down to City Hall, and I checked it out, and Rosemary Dickinson followed true on it, she got ahold of a guy named Mr. Tatro, I believe, and he says, because I said, "They never came to council to get permission to put them poles in there." And Mr. Tatro said, "These are not new installations." He says, "We only need it when we go to put a new pole in." Well, their lines were hooked up, and the guy was right here, I don't know if that was Mr. Tatro or not, and he said, "Them other poles belong to the telephone company," or whatever. But as far as I'm concerned, they put two new poles in, and that's a new installation, and they should be coming to council. And they put, on the second pole that they put up, they bought a brace, and it goes almost to the top of one of my lawns, I got a tapered lawn. And not only that, after they were finished, they left a mace there, a mess. When they buried the poles, they got extra dirt, and they just left it right there. Well, I'm gonna rake that dirt into the road and let the city take care of it. I am not, I'm sick of following them, because when the fellows come up to trim the trees, I had a mess left, and I picked that up, and finally, the guy from National Grid told me to get them back up there. They come back up, and they still didn't clean up all the mess. And that was Aspen. So I think, I don't know what action it's gonna take, but the poles are up, but I think they have to comply with the ordinance, that they come before council and get, if they move the pole next to it. That's a new installation.
Thank you, Mr. Cardamino. The mayor has been in contact with National Grid and is trying to get an answer. She notified me that there was a concern, so she's looking into it.
Wait a minute, you're talking too fast, I can't understand.
I'm sorry, the mayor is looking into this, or somebody in City Hall is looking into it, and will get ahold of you next week.
How do you know that?
Because I got a call.
Today?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so she's looking into it, or somebody is on her behalf, she will get, somebody will get ahold of you next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anyone else wish to address the council?
Again, I'm Robert Smith. I live at 163 North Street in North Adams. In a couple weeks, I'll be living in this city six years. It's my city now. New York has been left behind, even with all the 75 years I spent down there. But I'm concerned about things involving what's going on in the council chambers. For example, not every one of the councils is on board for the citizens in our city. Now, you all got votes from certain segments of the population, but once you took the oath, you have to answer to everybody in the city. I'm one of the constituents, speaking for some of my friends who don't like what's going on, including myself. We have to keep things within our own house in North Adams. This thing about running to the state is not acceptable. It wastes time for the citizens in this city that you have to use to get things done for them. We're all tired of this nonsense. It's truly garbage, and it needs to stop. There's certain councils on this, this committee here with all of you, that have personal agendas and don't really do anything for the citizens in our city. They waste time, and it's gotta stop, and if it doesn't stop, I will take other action to expose them. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Hearing none, I declare open forum closed. Mayor does not have any updates, committee reports in minutes, liaison updates, and councilors' concerns. Councilor Shade?
Yes, I've sent out an email, I hope everybody has gotten it, but we will be having the final idea commission training. It is scheduled for January 17 at 6:00 PM in the second floor conference room upstairs. So if you are able to attend, please respond to the email. If you're not able to attend, please respond to the email, just so we have a count and we know who's gonna be there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you're doing on that committee. Council Wilkinson, then Council Harpen?
I just want to express gratitude to those people that participated in getting the short-term rentals finally into a document. Mr. Moranty and Mr. New Valley put many, many, many hours into this when they were on the ad hoc committee. We met four or five times, it went through numerous... We met four or five times, we went through numerous drafts, each one changing a little bit to what we got today. I'd also like to thank people that were on the General Government Committee, because it's bounced back from us to other people many, many times, certainly in the mayor's office, too, that coordinated it all, so. It's easy just to say, "Yeah, we approve," but we've been doing this for a year and a half, and I think Counselor Bona thinks it's much longer, and he might be right. The bottom line is, what you see or what you read in the paper the next day is just kind of superficial. Yep, they got the job done. It doesn't tell you all the background, it doesn't tell you all the hard work, so I don't, it won't be said anywhere, but it's gonna be said by me here. Thank you, everybody that participated, we got it done.
Counselor Harpen.
I just want to let everybody know that tonight is the last night for the Arnold Family Christmas decorations up on East Main Street. They have been doing it for over 30 years, and they have brought a lot of magic and light to the community, and I just want to personally thank them. And if you have a chance to, to thank them, either on Facebook, or send them a note, or go up and see their display tonight, I'm sure they would deeply appreciate it. So thank you to the Arnold family.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody, this is our last meeting of 2022, and I wish to, wish all my colleagues and our constituents Happy New Year, and hope that 2023 is a prosperous new year and a good year for everybody. Thank you.
I want to remind everybody that the first meeting in January, January 10, will be the reorganization of government. It's not as formal as when we are in inauguration year, but we will elect, we will vote on a president and vice president, we will also reassign seats. They could draw the exact same seats, but who knows? They will be a draw like we've, like we've done. Also, the Mass Municipal Association, MMA Annual Meeting, is the 20th and 21st of January. If you haven't booked your hotel, the Sheridan has already been, the deadline's gone to get the great group rate, but you can still register for the annual meeting, it's a great event. You get to meet your colleagues from across the state who are dealing with the same issues we are, so it's an opportunity to not reinvent the wheel and, and learn how other people are looking at other issues, at some of the same issues we have, and as some of, some of us are seasoned to share what we've learned over the years. There's a bunch of workshops, there's some great speakers, there's a, they call it a Wemo luncheon, it's Women Elected Municipal Officials. There, there's just a bunch of different events. Those of you, those who have gone have, said they got a lot out of it, so I'm hoping that people can make it. I know we had, last year, we had to pivot and cancel and go virtual, literally less than a week before the event, and then the year before, obviously, during COVID, it was canceled, so this will be the first time for the meeting in two years, so. Obviously, again, everybody, Happy New Year. City Hall will be closed next Monday in observance of the New Year, because that's the legal holiday, and have a good New Year, see you on the 10th. Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.